The board meeting starts. Can you film me right now, sir?
I can't.
Are you on?
Yes.
So this is why, put your smiles on. When the board meeting starts, we are also going to recognize you at the beginning of the meeting, having you come up and introduce your family members. You'll have a circle around the board, the walk of fame, and then after we recognize all of our retirees, you're free to go. We will not put you through an entire board meeting. So don't feel that you're rude or dumb or... If you want to take a list about the dinner. So with that being said, Mr. Stepford, if you'd like to...
Thank you, Mr. Steffler. Thank you, Mr. Steffler. On behalf of the North Branford High School faculty and staff, congratulate our retirees, Barbara Travassano and Mrs. Dolly Potter. Barbara has taught 21 years at North Branford High School in the business department, has been an educator for 32 years throughout her career. In addition to her classroom responsibilities, Barbara has always been known for her contributions beyond the school day, on campus at North Branford High. She has been a faculty participant in the Anti-Defamation League's Anti-Bullying Program named Controversial more than one occasion. She's been a longtime faculty advisor for the Future Business Leaders Club, now known as Helping Hands, and she's been very involved in her community, an active community member, volunteering at Columbus House, Charlotte, in New Haven, hospice in Branford, and many churches throughout her adult life. Following 9/11, Barbara actually traveled to New York and volunteered at the St. Paul's Church, serving meals across from Ground Zero. She is also, is known for baking thousands of breads, loads of breads, for Columbus House with our kids, and travels to New Haven with those breads in her car to give those to homeless. Barbara has participated in America's Home Front Day for more than a decade, assisting needy homeowners throughout New Haven County by refurbishing, painting, or repairing their homes or properties. Barbara Travassano was an MBHS teacher here in 1998 and was a recipient of the State of Connecticut Educational Citizenship Award presented by the Commissioner of Education and Governor in 2001. We would truly miss her and are exemplary examples of social and civic responsibilities as noted in our mission statement. Congratulations. Dolly has just completed her 20th year as a paraprofessional this past March. She let everyone know that, too. That paper arrived. And has worked throughout the district at many levels with the behavior of students. Mrs. Potter started in the Project Five program and has worked at MBIS and then at the high school for many years. While she's been assigned to work with our special education students, she has also worked and assisted all students while working in inclusion classes. And while retired, MBHS educator known as Mr. Altieri was often assigned by the assignment letters as Dolly's supervisor. All of us truly know who's really in charge. Kathy Mez was affectionately, gave her the nickname of Sergeant Potter and referred to her that during her retirement dinner the other evening. Dolly was a chaperone on a number of field trips throughout the years, including an overseas trip to Europe in 2011. And while we were on this trip, we were assigned to the same group of students during various portions of the trip. And during our many conversations throughout the trip, it became apparent that she actually met my in-laws, knew my in-laws before I met my wife 20 some odd years ago. Dolly was the North Branford Paraprofessional of the Year and represented the district at the state awards ceremony in 2012. At the grand term, she has already placed Dr. Woltz on notice that she was visiting Jerome Harrison in the near future. I've truly enjoyed our conversations about NASCAR, and we thank you for serving all our students for many years. Best of luck to both of you and congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Stepford. Mr. Mancini.
I took a little different stance with Claudia's remarks. I've known Claudia well we started together, and I just would like to reflect on my relationship with Claudia and what I've seen this year. It's a pleasure to say a few words, Claudia, on your behalf. You served North Branford for 38 years, and you certainly have demonstrated yourself as a leader in the community of education, and we all thank you for that. Claudia is truly our go-to girl. When I first arrived at Jerome Harrison, there I was, coming out from retirement for three years, and, you know, the things had changed quite a bit. And Claudia was that first person that came in and realized that, all of a sudden, we had something in common. We started together at Millville School, which is now the ACIS building, and now we're finishing together at Jerome Harrison. And Claudia remembered that collegial spirit that we had together and came right in and was very, very supportive. There was so much I did not know, and she guided me through it step by step, whether it be the ordering, whether it be the checking in of things, whether it be the scheduling. I know more than once you came in and you got that schedule yet. Claudia, your team will miss you. You were the person that guided that team. You were the head leader. You were the person that they looked up to. And I hope you come back. We talked, chatted briefly earlier about what you're going to do, you're going to find your niche, but I think it's also important that you contribute by coming back and seeing us now. Claudia, you and I have been wedded 38 years, or I a little longer, but not much. And as I look at you and I look at myself in the mirror, I realize that Claudia has wedded those years a whole lot. Congratulations on your retirement.
Thank you.
It's a well deserved, well done.
Thank you.
Second retiree. Marion. Marion O'Shea. Marion Napoleon once said, "An army travels on its stomach." Well, so does the principal. And so this principal, you have taken care of him very well, and I thank you for that. You were the provider for the children and their nourishment on a daily basis. Thank you for your years of service, your support, your flexibility with our schedule changes, and the patience. And I thank you for turkey days. You were good to the children all the time. You were concerned about them being able to have a meal when they came without the money for it. And it was more than just... Who's my... More than just a peanut butter sandwich. Thank you. Good luck to you. Good luck, and I thank you for your compassion. Appreciate it.
Okay, this time, we have proclamations to present, so I'm going to read the proclamation and have you come forward, and then we have a very small token of appreciation. We'll ask that you please stand for a picture, and if you would like to bring your family member up, we'd love to have them in the picture. This proclamation is presented in grateful appreciation to Marion O'Shea by the North Branford Board of Education on behalf of the entire school community as a testimony to your contributions to our community. Whereas during her 30 years of service to the North Branford Public Schools, has built a reputation as a caring, honest, dedicated, compassionate employee. Whereas as an employee of the North Branford Public Schools for the past 30 years, Marion O'Shea has served as a cafeteria employee and cafeteria manager. Now, therefore, the North Branford Board of Ed, on behalf of the grateful residents of this community, do hereby tender to Marion O'Shea this proclamation extending to her our deep appreciation for her distinguished service and our best wishes for continued good health and happiness in the future, presented by the North Branford Board of Education on June 12, 2014. Please come forward, Marion. And Marion, if you'd like to say a few words. If not, it's totally up to you.
No, I enjoyed working for our education. We've been a lot of good people.
Thank you. Yep, that's you. Come on up and get a hand, Stacey. Another dedicated employee.
I guess my body hurts.
No need to worry. Enjoy.
Thank you. How are you doing? I'm in pain. Hi, Al.
Okay, our next presentation is presented in grateful appreciation to Dolly Potter by the North Branford Board of Education on behalf of the entire school community as a testimonial to her contributions to our community. Whereas during her 20 years of service to the North Branford Public Schools, has built a reputation as a caring, honest, dedicated, compassionate employee. As an employee of the North Branford Public Schools for the past 20 years, Dolly Potter has served as a paraprofessional. Therefore, the North Branford Board of Ed, on behalf of the grateful residents of this community, do hereby tender to Dolly Potter this proclamation extending to her our deep appreciation for her distinguished service and our best wishes for continued good health and happiness in the future. Dolly, please be cool. We always wait, because we're not sure where to start.
I'm getting older. Wait.
Dolly, if you'd like to say a few words?
Just that my job here is over, love. It's not over. I'm excited for the next chapter of my life, and I appreciate every one of you, and I thank you for your opportunity to work at North Branford Schools.
Thank you. Thank you. This next presentation is a deep grateful appreciation to Barbara Travassano by the North Branford Board of Ed and the entire school community as a testimony to your contributions to our community. 21 years of service to the North Branford Public Schools in building reputation as a caring, honest, dedicated, compassionate employee. As an employee of the North Branford Schools for the past 21 years as an educator. Therefore, the North Branford Board of Education on behalf of the grateful residents of this community do hereby tender to Barbara Travassano with a proclamation extending to her our deep appreciation for her distinguished service and our best wishes for continued good health and happiness in the future. Barbara.
First time.
Okay. I would like to thank all of the administrators, my colleagues, and all the parents of North Branford, and especially the students for giving me such a wonderful opportunity to carry on.
Thank you. Okay, and our last presentation. A grateful appreciation to Claudia from the North Branford Board of Education on behalf of the entire school community as a testimonial to your contributions to our community. Whereas during her 38 years of service to the North Branford Public Schools, has built a reputation as a caring, honest, dedicated, compassionate employee. And whereas as an employee of the North Branford Public Schools for the past 38 years, Claudia has served as an educator. Therefore, the North Branford Board of Education on behalf of the grateful residents of this community do hereby tender to Claudia, following this proclamation, extending to her our deep appreciation for her distinguished service and our best wishes for continued good health and happiness in the future. Claudia, please be cool. I'm still finding it. Got that. Good. It's getting better. Okay.
Thank you. I've enjoyed my 38 years here. I'm looking forward to the next chapter of my life. I don't know what that's going to be because there's so many things that I haven't had the chance to do because schools take up my time. But I look around the room and I see parents of children that I've had, colleagues that I went to school with, and, you know, North Branford's a real big part of my life. And thank you for the great run, 38 years seem to fly by. I can remember when I first started teaching, I was with, I was at Cedar Lake School. And at that point, I remember one time I went out and I said to somebody, "Oh, I was out with some older people." They were 29 years old.
You don't say that anymore, right?
You don't say that anymore. You just turn around and you're there, you know? And this really hasn't hit me yet that I'm leaving, and I'm sure that, you know, when September rolls around, I'm going to feel sad and wish that I was there. And I got a little tinge of that when I was assessing incoming students, and one of the parents said, "Oh, this is Mrs. Ford. Maybe she'll be your teacher next year." And I thought, you know, I'm not going to be here. So I loved working here. I met wonderful parents, worked with wonderful children, and I thank you for the opportunity to work here. Thank you very much.
I don't have a plaque for this next presentation. He's officially retired, but we actually, we thought a lot of retirement. I want to recognize Tony Mancini. This was a year ago. At this time, we were closing the school year and we were looking for a new principal. And I was giving Tony his name, and in a short time, I realized that this was the person that we needed to settle things and to get us through this year in order for us to do a thorough search and find our next principal. Tony has been an amazing addition to our administrative team, and he's been a wonderful mentor, and more importantly, to me, an amazing friend. And I'm going to cherish our one year together, Tony. I'm not saying goodbye to you because I know we live.
We, you too.
I look forward to our continued friendship, and I will thank you on behalf of the entire North Branford community for stepping in and guiding our ship and loving our children. So without further ado, Tony Mancini.
Some of you may have forgotten what I'm going to say, but it's true. When I first started in administration 43 years ago, I was as tall as Scott. Parents and officials have a way of whittling you down. Thank you. This is a special district. I don't know if you realize that. Sometimes you don't realize it because you're there. This is a special district. Jerome Harrison is a special school of just wonderful, wonderful children. Parents have been very supportive, and of course, the staff and people like Claudia, who came forth, came forward and helped make that transition from retirement to active service. And of course, the leadership of Scott, I can't say enough about that. But I'm Mickey to keep me in the budget column and positive place. Thank you. Marion, keeping me nourished and of course, Sue, put all of you. Marie, we worked together in North Haven. I think, you know, we had a few words before. North Branford is a different place, and it is a special place. And be proud of it. And for those of you who are here, if you don't know that, I'm telling you, please take it for gospel. And lastly, I need to thank one last person, Tracy. I would have been underwater. Thank you.
We're going to miss our donut man.
I expect you on time tomorrow. Just in closing, I want to thank obviously our retirees, but the family members that are here this evening because you truly know what goes into the commitment of being an educator. And all of you are educators. You care for and you nourish and you love our children. And I'll use the term old school, and please take that as a compliment, that we have so much to learn from your guidance and what you put into educating our children and giving them the foundation and the grounding to fly and to flourish at all grades, at all levels, right through to the graduating years in high school. Each year is as important as the next. So thank you on behalf of the North Branford Board of Education. I wish you nothing but the best, health and happiness to enjoy your families, your little ones, your children, your friends, and all of us. And please come back. I know, as Tony mentioned about, you know, come back, come back, and Tony will be back. And we would like nothing more than to see you enter our buildings because you bring so much to us. So thank you and enjoy everything. Thank you. All the meeting to order at 7:17, please. Roll call.
Chairman Cattermester?
Here.
Vice Chair Naprio?
Here.
Secretary Yo War?
Here.
Ed Cordino?
Here.
Philip Dalmeyer?
Here.
David McMahon?
Here.
Deborah Perdian?
Here.
Salute the Lord.
The nations testify of the United States of America and the sovereign republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Visitors, any comments come into the agenda? Before we begin tonight, I apologize for interrupting. I'd like to ask at this time if we could please offer a moment of silence in honor of Dr. Robert Wolt, who passed away recently. He was the superintendent here for seven years and had a long career in education, and I'd like to honor him at this time. Thank you. Okay, then, visitors, anything to the agenda? Any visitors' comments?
Okay. I'd like to take a brief moment to apologize to people at North Branford for my extended absence. I had some family issues. I'd also like to thank Mr. Schoolmaker and my colleagues for their support in my time of need, and it's good to be back. Thank you.
Glad to be back again.
Thanks for coming back, bud. Okay, student representatives.
Hello, everybody. First of all, sorry Christine's not here. She had a really important rehearsal for a dance recital. It's the only thing she's going to be able to make it. To start off, the annual high school concert was held on May 21st. Concert band, jazz ensemble, concert choir, and select chorus all performed. And also, the newly formed wind ensemble, who placed first in the Music in the Parks Festival, they also performed, and their group consists of 18 students from the high school and five students from the middle school. And then, the high school academic award ceremony was held on May 22nd, and there were 21 students recognized as advanced placement honors students, which means that they completed three or more AP classes. And there was also 10 students recognized for the Presidential Board of Excellence, which means that they had a cumulative average of 90 and placed in the 85th percentile for ACTs or SATs. And the high school's IPP showcase was May 20th in the auditorium, and 49 students presented their IPP projects. And they are all set up stations throughout the auditorium to present their project to the parent staff, administrators, the community leaders who attended. And the senior class trip to Lake Comptons took place on May 29th. The seniors from the beginning of the day met the high school calf and then departed on the buses. And the return buses, I'm pretty sure there was only one bus that came back at 2 o'clock to close the school day, and the remaining buses stayed at the park until they returned at 4 o'clock to the rest of the students because they wanted to stay. And the third talent show at the high school was held on the 9th of May 30th, and the performances included opera, magic tricks, cover songs from the 50s, and leading to the present, dance routines, and skits. And congratulations to Mr. Conroly for hosting the show because it was a big success. And lastly, exams. Exams at the high school are scheduled for next week, starting on June 17th through the following Monday, the 23rd, but that Monday's graduation just makeups for exams. And the planning committee for graduation has taken all necessary steps to plan everything out, planning for an outdoor graduation, but have also planned for any indoor event that may be necessary. Hopefully not.
So I want to commend Christine and Bryce and Maggie. Christina, obviously, had a commitment this evening, she was trying to finish and get there, but she's the number three student in the senior class right now. And she'll obviously graduate on the twenty-third with her classmates. She has participated in many advanced placement and honors level courses. Currently, she is enrolled in AP Spanish, AP Calc, AP Biology, AP Lit, and Physics. She's a member of the National Honors Society, the Littering Club, Kaleidoscope, and has volunteered at St. Augustine's Church and Bramford Community Dining Hall. Christina is an accomplished student who is also humble and well-respected by her peers and staff at the high school. Christina will be majoring in pharmaceutical sciences at UConn next year, so we have a round of applause for Christine. And Bryce, who is a junior, will be back with us next year. He served as a member of the high school student council for each of his three years at the high school and has been an officer for the past two years. Bryce is currently completing his junior year with many challenging courses on his schedule, including Spanish Four Honors, AP Psych, British Lit Honors, Biology Honors, and General Science Honors. Bryce is an accomplished member of the high school boys soccer and track teams. He's a member of the National Honors Society and was a talented facilitator this school year for the Anti-Defamation League. Names can come in this program. So we have another year to enjoy with Bryce, but I do want to compliment and thank both students for their commitment and for their professionalism. They did a wonderful job and truly represented our high school with grace and dignity. So congratulations and thank you. This is a small token of our appreciation for your dedication, Bryce. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if you wouldn't mind, I will deliver that. Christina, I'll catch up to you.
Are you going to stay or are you going to depart?
I'll depart.
He's going to study for his exam.
Yes. Walk and do the shake. Thank you, Christina.
Sorry, you're good.
See you next year. All right, approval of the previous minutes, May fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen Board of Education meetings.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the May fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen Board of Education meeting.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Chairman Paternoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Secretary O'Ward?
Yes.
Ed Cordino?
Yes.
Philip Downmire?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnier?
Yes.
I think it was Colby's first motion.
Personnel, resignations. Superintendent has received resignation from Ms. Erin Flood Harrison, language arts teacher at North Bradford Intermediate School, effective the end of two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen school year. I'll second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Chairman Paternoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Secretary O'Ward?
Yes.
Ed Cordino?
Yes.
Philip Downmire?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnier?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the resignation of Mr. Scott Hunt, school psychologist at North Bradford High School, effective the end of two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen school year.
I'll second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Chairman Paternoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Secretary O'Ward?
Yes.
Ed Cordino?
Yes.
Philip Downmire?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnier?
Yes.
I think it was Colby's first motion.
Personnel, personnel, resignations. Superintendent has received resignation from Ms. Erin Flood Harrison, language arts teacher at North Bradford Intermediate School, effective the end of two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen school year.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the resignation of Ms. Erin Flood Harrison, language
arts teacher at North Bradford Intermediate School, effective the end of the two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen school year.
I'll second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Chairman Paternoster?
Yes.
Chairman Pat.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Secretary O'Ward?
Yes.
Ed Cordino?
Yes.
Philip Downmire?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnier?
Yes.
What do you want to read?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to accept the resignation of Mr. Scott Hunt, school
psychologist at North Bradford High School, effective the end of two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen school year.
I'll second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Chairman Paternoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Secretary O'Ward?
Yes.
Ed Cordino?
Yes.
Philip Downmire?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnier?
Yes.
Okay, then I'd like to accept the retirement resignation of Ms. Kate Fleming, kindergarten teacher at Jerome Harrison Elementary School, effective October thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen.
I'll second. Give it to Phil.
Yeah, I got two hundred of my bells, right?
Do we have to write the motion for that? No, that person, that person.
Any discussion? Oh, let's go. Do we not?
No, because you have resignations on that, so.
We just add it right. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Chairman Paternoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Secretary O'Ward?
Yes.
Ed Cordino?
Yes.
Philip Downmire?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnier?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to accept the retirement resignation of Mr. John DiNanzio, technical education teacher at North Bradford High School, effective June thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen, after thirty-one years of dedicated service to the students of North Bradford.
I'll second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Chairman Paternoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Secretary O'Ward?
Yes.
Ed Cordino?
Yes.
Philip Downmire?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnier?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Ms. Morgan O'Brien, mathematics teacher at North Bradford Intermediate School, effective June thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen.
I'll second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Chairman Paternoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Secretary O'Ward?
Yes.
Ed Cordino?
Yes.
Philip Downmire?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnier?
Yes.
Moving right along, appointments? I would like to just comment on the five employees that I just mentioned. I'd like to thank them for their service. Erin Flood Harrison has been our eternity lead and has decided to stay home with her. And we wish her nothing but the best and thank her for her dedicated service. Mr. Scott Hunt, our school psychologist, has relocated to Danbury, Connecticut with his wife and has been hired at Danbury High School. And it's obviously a very long commute from Danbury, it's a work transfer, so we certainly thank him for his year, his dedication, and wish him well. Ms. Kate Fleming, as was mentioned, has twenty-plus years here with us and will retire in late October. And I want to publicly thank and recognize her for her dedication to our students. We'll do that again, but I do want to mention that. John DiNanzio has been with us for thirty-plus years and has done an amazing job with our youngsters. And we certainly recognize that. And lastly, Morgan O'Brien has moved to Manhattan. She's going to be working in public school, I believe sixteen in Manhattan. And her family is from New York, so it was an opportunity for her to get back home. So I appreciate all the efforts and the time. Thank you. Okay, appointments, none at this time? Please, none at this time. Now we go to the superintendent's report. I'm thrown off now because we've gone out of order. We've got reps today. We're not going to do the student reps again. If you turn to page three, you'll see that we have a recognized part, a valvotory, a studentory in our essays, and there's biographies of the two students. Obviously Christina was not able to be here. She is number three in the class as a says. She's an amazing young lady who has accomplished a great deal and will do very well. All right, saluted Tony Zach Arthur, number two in the class. He's enrolled, as you see, in numerous advanced placement classes and will be attending Boston College next year, a very, very competitive school. And we're so proud of what he's accomplished and he's a fine young man. And last there, Val Toin, who you know from our student, Kevin Sullivan. Again, just a gentleman and outstanding, outstanding young man, a scholar and athlete and very involved in the school community. And he will be attending Yale next year. So, so much to be proud of. It speaks volumes to the staff from kindergarten through grade twelve, to instilling these students the love of learning, to challenge them at the level that we challenge these students to get into these institutions. And they're among the best and brightest to get into Yale, to get into Boston College, to get into the pharmacy school in UConn. You're competing with the best. So kudos to our teaching staff, kudos to our administrators for preparing these young adults. And I'll give a report later about the senior class and their outstanding accomplishments. But I want to recognize those three students. Okay. Boy, this just keeps getting better. Donation is next. This is my favorite part of the evening, when we're recognizing students and we're able to assist students. And you know the name that I'm going to introduce next. I've done it every year since I've been here. And I contact Lynn when there's crisis and there's a need. And Lynn, whether it's a student that's enrolled, or a graduate, or a family that's in need, runs to the cause. And again, I care enough about Lynn and her dedication to this community. Matt's Mission, again, is stepping up to assist North Bradford students at our camp that we've been talking about, that runs at Tucutin Valley, and has donated two thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars to students and families in need that would not be able to participate in this opportunity. So on behalf of the Board of Education, I want to thank you. I want you to come forward and please shake the hands of our board members. So Lynn Rea from Matt's Mission.
Give him a check to Don.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the generous donation in the amount of two thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars from Matt's Mission Fund to provide opportunities to North Bradford students to attend the two thousand and fourteen summer camp program.
I'll second. Any discussion?
Can I just say, I just wanted to let everyone know that the letters went out from the Board of Education to all children who participate in the North Bradford Youth Lunch Program. And within two days, eighteen spots were filled. I picked eighteen because Matt was eighteen when he died. And then I felt bad that two days, that it was done. And so I said, well, let's write up the week and let's see how it goes. And by the end of the week, my cutoff had to be twenty-three. I picked some number that has something to do with Matt, and he died on the twenty-third. So I said, all right, well, we'll go up to twenty-three students this year, and by the end of the week, twenty-three students. So I don't know how many students ended up getting turned away, but at least twenty-three got to go to camp this summer, so I'm happy for them.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Chairman Paternoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Secretary O'Ward?
Yes.
Ed Cordino?
Yes.
Philip Downmire?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnier?
Yes.
Okay. We've been talking about the band program and the charge of raising money for their uniforms. And at the last meeting, we announced that our goal was to raise twenty-two thousand dollars, and students had raised over fifteen thousand, or fourteen thousand at the time. The next day, I was made aware that Dr. Lindsay had gone back to the school and had a conversation with her staff, and Tucutin Valley wanted to donate money to this cause. And that was very powerful. And our administrators understand that it's a K-12 continuum, that all students are our students. And it was very gracious of Tucutin Valley to donate a thousand dollars. So I want personally to thank Dr. Lindsay, Tucutin Valley, for continuing, walk through that school if you think they don't support the arts. What Tony's talking about, the best kept secret with what we have going on in these walls, preparing our students. And they played for you last week here, excuse me, last month, twenty-three students, and left and won an award that next week. So it's a tribute to generosity and your support of the arts, and I can't say that enough. In tough budget times, those are the things that go first, and we must continue to fight, fight, fight for those programs for our students. For some of our students, it's the best part of their day. For many of our students, that's why they get out of bed and come to school. So thank you, and thank you, Dr. Lindsay. I'd like to make a motion to accept the generous donation from Tucutin Valley Elementary School in the amount of one thousand dollars towards the purchase of North Bradford High School, gave due in full. I'll second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Chairman Paternoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Secretary O'Ward?
Yes.
Ed Cordino?
Yes.
Philip Downmire?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnier?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. There are no field trips discussed at this time. The communication letters are attached. They've been kind of very busy, I guess, anyway, but as we've been towards the close of the year, it's a frenetic pace. So thank you to the administrators. If there's any questions, the administrators are here this evening. If not, there are three letters. Exercited D E and F, the Workers' Compensation Committee, Commission has recognized us for our safety and health audit. Don Winnicky chairs that committee and meets monthly, and they look at the number of incidents in our safety record and report everything to the state. And Don, obviously, we have an outstanding record and things are going well.
Well, one thing that's important for this too is it allows us to continue to be part of the coordinated service network that has to be approved by the commissioner. And without this, you can't do that. So we actually have a network-based treatment system for our workers, Don. And that saves us money.
Public Works Director, item E, thanking Mr. John Florio for completing the bathroom here in the senior center. I know there was a lot of discussion about the cost of this. The council was looking at exuding costs with design and build, and John Florio's name was brought up as the person that could do this for a fraction of the cost. And as always, stepped up and helped the town out and completed the bathroom in the senior center. He did a beautiful job. He did ninety percent of the work, including the plug. He's a licensed plumber, all the plugging, all the tile work, all the sheetrock, and studying and finishing work. So I want to thank Fran for recognizing the commitment of John Florio in helping the town with this project. And lastly, the F, a letter from Mr. Anthony Esposito. Unfortunately, it was a sad occasion that we sent food baskets to our fire department, police, and rescue for the loss of one of our young graduates, a little over a month ago. So I want to recognize emergency services and what they do in this town, the volunteer fire department, our police crew, and our medical crew on the ambulance, they're phenomenal. I get to work with them at sporting events when things may have illness or crises and killings, and they are so professional, and we're so lucky to have them. So on behalf of the Board of Education, thank you for what you do. Okay. The Health and Food Certification. I'm not going to read that entire paragraph to you. The Public Act zero-six-six-three, an act concerning healthy foods and beverages. We decline the reimbursement of ten cents because of our involvement in concession stands and things that we do. police and rescue for the loss of one of our young graduates a little over a month ago. So I want to recognize emergency services and what they do in this town, the volunteer fire department, our police crew, and our medical crew on the ambulance, they're phenomenal. I get to work with them at sporting events when things may have been illness or crises and bombings, and they are so professional, and we're so lucky to have them. So on behalf of the Board of Education, thank you for what you do. Okay. The healthy food certification. I'm not going to read that entire paragraph to you. The Public Act 0663, an act concerning healthy foods and beverages. We decline the reimbursement of ten cents because of our involvement in concession stands and things that we do after school and weekends, which if we didn't, we would lose a great deal of revenue, and it would not offset the ten cents. So we serve the federally mandated healthy school choice menu, and we also run concession stands and things after school. So we respectfully decline that each year. So I ask that we continue to support that as a motion.
I'd like to make a motion. Pursuant to Section 10151B of the Connecticut General Statute, the North Grandford Board of Education certifies that all food items offered for sale to students in North Grandford public schools and not exempted from the Connecticut Nutrition Standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Education will not meet standards during the period of July 1st, 2014 through June 30th, 2014.
I'll say it. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Chairman Paternoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anafrio?
Yes.
Secretary O'Rourke?
Yes.
Ed Cordino?
Yes.
Philip Downmire?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnia?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I mentioned before the post-high school plans. I have a copy of the one hundred and twenty, excuse me, one hundred and forty hundred students and what they'll be doing next year. Looking at the total number, eighty-five percent of our students, one hundred and twenty, will continue their education. Of those one hundred and ten students continuing their education, sixty-five percent are going to four-year institutions, thirty-five are attending two-year colleges or vocational schools, four students are listening in the military, eleven students plan on working full-time, two students will continue with us in the eighteen, twenty-one-year-old program, and four students are undecided at this point. So they could change and decide to pursue school, or go to work, or they will figure it out. But it's interesting, and I look at this every year and spend some time with where our students are going to be attending, and some of the rationale and reasons for why they chose their school. And it's interesting, this year, a number of our students are enrolling in state schools and community colleges, and it's the cost factor. You know, when I sit and talk with the kids, and I spend a lot of time with them, you know, getting a feel for what ways they're not in decision-making, and they're very honest and willing with it, and it's dollars and cents. And they'll say to the school manager, after four years, I don't want to be X amount of dollars in debt, knowing I'm going to have to go back and get a master's. And we've been well-served by our state schools, and many of our students are attending Southern, Western, University of Connecticut, Eastern. So kudos to them for making those decisions. It speaks volumes to our state schools and where they're at right now. And I have this data for you, and I will forward it to you. I'm just going to retract all the names. Okay, any questions on the high school plans? If you're at eighty-five percent or higher, attending post-high school education, you should be very proud. Certified evaluation under Section 10151B of the Connecticut General Statute, I have to guarantee that our administrators and my office are completing said evaluations, assembling evaluations by on or around June 30th. The administrators have been working diligently all year, completing the evaluations under the new evaluation system. I'll speak to the evaluation system a little further on the agenda, but they've been working diligently. It's a lot of work, and they've embraced this and have done a wonderful job. So we're moving along, and we will have our required evaluations done by the 30th. The authority to hire, as in the past, in the summer months, as you have been aware, that we potentially have openings during the summer months, plans change, people move on, things happen, and I have to have the ability to hire the best qualified persons. So the past, the board has granted me that authority to hire and ask that you do that in the season.
I'd make a motion to approve that authority granted to the superintendent to hire certified personnel, effective immediately until the September eighteenth, 2014.
I'll say it. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Chairman Paternoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anafrio?
Yes.
Secretary O'Rourke?
Yes.
Ed Cordino?
Yes.
Philip Downmire?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnia?
Yes.
And that concludes my report.
Going down to the post-high school plan, you know, I've talked to some people at some of the state schools and whatnot. They're getting a little bit more competitive, the state schools, because so many more kids are applying. Pool has gotten so large, that they're actually being, they have the ability to be a little choosier on who they accept, too.
Oh, absolutely.
So, you know, going to a state school isn't, you know, a cost factor, yes, it makes a lot of sense, but it makes a lot of sense in a lot of ways. They are getting more competitive because their pool is larger.
We've seen the average SAT score, and when I started as a high school principal now, at UConn, increased by two hundred points to gain entrance into, and you include the writing piece or not, the two standard pieces of the SAT, those scores are up two hundred points from ten or twelve years ago. International competition, you probably see the affordability of the state schools and the quality of the state schools. If you travel to these campuses, they're totally renovated, they're absolutely beautiful, and they're offering so much more to the students.
UConn is a very, very competitive school.
Absolutely. And at UConn, we have a student going into the UConn honors program, one of our top ten students. Add another two hundred points to your SAT score on the two traditional, you have to add a seven hundred on your math and your English portion of the SAT to get into the honors program. So it's exceptional.
Not to put you on the spot, Tracy, and if you notice off the camera, do you know what the average SAT score is?
Between five oh eight and five fifteen.
Five eight, five fifteen.
For us?
Five oh eight, that's national, five oh eight, five fifteen.
For math and for English?
Yes.
And we've been above those scores with, as I always qualify that statement by stating that, we encourage all of our students to participate in the SAT. We give the PSAT in sophomore year, the students take the PSAT in preparation for the SAT, and we encourage all juniors and seniors to participate in that. So when you hit ninety percent of grade of students participating in the SAT, your score is going to dip, obviously, versus fifty percent of your high-end kids participating. So we do well, and we spend a lot of time preparing our kids and encouraging our students to take the test.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving along to committee requests. Are there negotiations? Asking me for executive session. Budget and operations?
I'd like to make a motion to eliminate one grade-three teacher, one grade-five teacher, one NBIS business teacher, one TVES special education teacher, one NBHS special education teacher, two instructional apparel professionals, and one security monitor for the 2014, 2015 requested budget.
I'll say it. Roll call, please.
Chairman Paternoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Anafrio?
Yes.
Secretary O'Rourke?
Yes.
Ed Cordino?
Yes.
Philip Downmire?
No.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnia?
Yes.
I make a motion to reduce the 2014, 2015 budget request by the following amounts. Four hundred and fifty-six thousand, five hundred dollars in certified salaries, one hundred and five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars from non-certified salaries, one hundred and seventy thousand, ninety-nine dollars from employee benefits, thirty-five thousand dollars from professional services, thirty-six thousand dollars in transportation, two hundred and sixty thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars from outside tuition, and twenty-eight thousand dollars from instructional supplies, and twenty-two thousand dollars from energy.
I'll say it. Any discussion?
Yeah, I know we have to make these cuts to meet the budget requirements that the council will pose. But I can't vote for it. It's ridiculous. We throw forty-three thousand dollars away on a useless arbitration situation, and then we have to cut budgets on something else, and it's ridiculous.
I agree with you on that.
Absolutely.
We're going to get to our number, unfortunately.
Any more?
I, more than likely, am going to vote the same way that Phil is, and I talked about this earlier, that I have a problem with a cup in the outside tuition. So my vote is reflected only of that portion of it, and it's just, I'm just not comfortable with it. I understand we have to get done somehow, but for the record, I'm just not comfortable with it.
She doesn't want to pass this to Mary some she does.
Absolutely. Roll call.
Chairman Paternoster?
No.
Vice Chair Anafrio?
Yes.
Secretary O'Rourke? Ed Cordino?
Yes.
Philip Downmire?
No.
David McMahon?
No.
Deborah Purnia?
No.
Curriculum instruction, answer to teachers' plan.
We did have a curriculum meeting canceled.
We did not have a meeting, however, I provided the update to, as Mr. Morgan said, to the educator evaluation plan. The administrators are currently using student achievement data, as well as parents' feedback to calculate the certified staff members' summative ratings. The building administrators are having their summative performance conversations with each of those staff members prior to the end of the school year. The summative rating aggregate data will be compiled and reported to the state no later than June 30th of this year. Dr. Lindsay and myself have been revising the North Grandford Public Schools educator evaluation plan in accordance with the changes in the guidelines by the state of Connecticut. Upon, we will submit that plan by June 20th. Upon acceptance of the plan by the state, the revised plan will be presented to you, the Board of Education, for its approval. The professional development plan, the revised professional development plan, the revised plan, obstacle training calibration, and the data management process will be planned for August and September of the upcoming year.
Thank you. Moving along, pension, no meeting, policy, none, basis.
I don't think we've been able to vote.
All right, building committee?
Committee was canceled.
Let me need more Wednesday.
That's because it was canceled Monday. It was Wednesday.
Well, see, I didn't know that.
Okay. Communications?
Communications is twofold. I don't think we got anything through the communication line. I don't think we got any, I don't recall anything coming through the communication.
We had one email we forwarded through regarding our cafeteria and hygienic requirements of our workers, and we addressed that. I sent an email thanking the person for bringing it to my attention, so you should have gotten that.
I don't recall that one.
Okay. I will, I re-sent to you. It was something that a person observed and wanted, brought to my attention, and I thanked the person for that, and it was addressed.
Oh, okay, yeah, I didn't see anything coming through. And then we had a communication meeting in conjunction with the town council Monday night, and mostly what was discussed was budget issues there. There's been money approved from the town council, money appropriated from the town council for some capital improvements. The high school roof is, they're starting to get it ready now, so the school gets out, they can move full force on it. They've allocated money for the resurfacing of the track, and we're getting, moving on that pretty quickly. They've also allocated money for the renovations of the bathrooms at the high school filing, thank goodness, and we're going to jump on that pretty quickly. They did allocate money for science room upgrades, but unfortunately, there's too much lead time to get everything that we need, and the vestiges issue and everything else that, we're going to have to put that on hold till next year.
Going a little quicker.
In the springtime, I talked about, interestingly, getting it on order in the spring so that it'll be ready to go, so the school gets out next year. So we're very grateful for all of that. I think that was basically.
Yeah, there were discussions of self-insurance next year, investigating the potential cost savings through self-insurance, so the council was going to look into that.
Does the asbestos statement, when they do the science labs over, does that have to be bid out, or is that on a contract?
No, we always bid the asbestos available.
Could that actually be done earlier, so again, so it's ready to go, and for a commitment of?
That particular room does not need an abatement, and we are planning this summer on doing the storage room between 106 and 108.
Okay.
All right, moving along, go to the board. We're skipping over new business reduction for our executive session, moving on to the board. It was an update on the educator evaluation plan, and I will just leave that in a nutshell. Dr. Lindsay and Tracy Muneke have been working on that with the committee. There were requirements by the state of Connecticut that we had to include in our evaluation plan. We were very close, running parallel with what the expectations were, so we had minimal changes. It's sent, and it will be reviewed by the state on June 20th. We will get it back, and we'll look for you to vote and approve it in the July voting. Okay. Any questions from that?
First of all, the board, just like I say, you know, I had the pleasure of attending Matt's Mission, and there was just an incredible amount of support from the town, and, you know, students, it was unbelievable how many people were there. They looked at, they should have been.
One of my favorite things I got to say is the IPP showcase. I really enjoyed it. I know Phil was there, and Dave was there. I just really enjoyed it. I loved walking around, talking to the kids about their projects. It's, I think it's a great thing. Some of the students I talked to maybe were teachers aides in classrooms, thinking they wanted to go to teaching, or working in a hospital, thinking they wanted to go into nursing, and I would say, well, did you decide that that's what you want to do? And they're like, no, I decided I didn't want to do that, which I think is great, too, before you invest all this time and energy and take certain classes in college, you know, to go along with this if you're really not interested in it. And some of the projects that the kids did are just unbelievable, unbelievable. That kayak was.
We have it all for him on the stand here.
That's right, that's right.
Put him on the spot for his IPP project for next year, so that's a surprise, though. He has to agree with us, but it'll benefit all of us.
I think it's great. I think that's the highest number that you guys have had, right?
The showcase, yeah, was, I think, forty-nine of fifty kids.
I think you're almost outgrowing the space that you have.
It was well-attended this year, too. This was the best attendance I saw as well, which I was glad to say. You got anything else?
Yeah, of course I had some. I attended scholarship awards, which I thought was really good. It feels nice seeing so many kids get some type of help, assistance, and get recognized. The other night, so Mr. Steffler and Mr. Rolsten were inviting me. Now that the year is coming to an end, I just, first of all, I want to thank Mr. Mancini for stepping in, and he did a great job. So thank you there. And Mr. Schoolmaker and Mr. Wunneke, I think we had a really good year overall. But what's really interesting, I look out there and I see three out of the four administrators running our schools are very young and up-and-coming. I mean it there. I'm not going to go any further. Don't all look at Mr. Davis. He's old, seriously.
He's been in the ministry for a long time, he's been alive.
I'm forty-nine, wait, is this a rose for a board member? Mr. Davis, I think utilize your name.
I haven't had a vote. He's not a senior.
But seriously, it's nice seeing that we have, but Mr. Davis, you act much younger than everybody else.
This is a good, that's better.
It is nice seeing, you know, we have some really good administrators and all the teachers in this town and Tracy, you've done a lot and it's really looking forward to a great year in two thousand fourteen, fifteen. And one thing I have to say as a taxpayer, I'm very proud of this board, by the way. You know, we're very diverse. We say what we have to say. There's no one on this board that tries to influence anybody else.
There's young people on this board too.
Thank you for recognizing that. But I think we really have a good, good job ahead of us and we're going to do a good job next year. I wish everybody a great summer and I just think you've all done a great job this, this past year. Carter, we expect you to, you know, we got to follow Mr. Mancini, so you did a good job today, I guess, in the, whatever, the, the, that was impressive, you did that. That was impressive. I never tried to see that, but, but thank you everybody for a great year and we look forward to another, one more year. That's it. That's all I'm here for, one more. Anything else? What else? Visitors impressed. We know those people are impressed.
Mr. Potter, where's Mr. Potter?
We got, we got video cast, Castlevania.
For YouTube later.
Yes. Sorry, I'm Mr. Rose.
Roseanne, hello. I just have two things. First is just wondering when you're going to finalize your budget because you have to have a budget in place by July first, so are you going to have a special meeting to finalize your budget and have it in place since you voted down your cuts and there's really not much?
That comes through some of us for a loop, so we don't have the answer yet.
And the second thing is, the building committee, the representatives from the board of ed have not been at the building committee meetings for at least the last three months. And I know you have two representatives and an alternate. And this is really an important committee, given the fact that you're in the process of replacing the roof at the high school and TBS roof project will be coming to the building committee. So I would really encourage the members that are appointed to it to start attending meetings again. Thank you.
Thank you for turning our attention. Anybody else?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn to executive session as per section one dash two-two-five of the Connecticut general statutes as permitted by section one dash two-hundred-six A and C of the Connecticut general statute to discuss agenda item Z, I-I-I-C, S-A and S-one-A. Second.
Any discussion? All set. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Okay, we need to go back to the motion that I made about the cuts that did not pass. I don't know where they are, but we'll get started. Doesn't matter what the motion is. Doesn't matter what the motion is, we have to schedule another meeting to re-vote. So what does everybody's schedule look like for next week? We need twenty-four hours notice to post, so.
Right, on Tuesday.
I moved, I moved it Tuesday, the seventeenth, the fifteenth off. Something to that.
Okay.
Works for us, works for me.
All right, you got a motion and you got a second.
So we're going to be on Tuesday at five o'clock?
We got it started.
To go over budgets lineup?
Yep.
Okay, Scott, that work for you? Tuesday, five o'clock?
Tuesday, five.
But I'll do it. Still made a motion in that mail.
Oh, sorry. Any questions? Roll call.
Chairman Patenoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Secretary O'Wort?
Yes.
Ed Cordino?
Yes.
Philip Delmeyer?
Yes.
We're going to let meeting end this morning.
I don't have motions spelled out for us. All right, just give me a second to think. We don't have a motion spelled out for us. To hold the contracts, what years are we talking?
We can just say for one additional year.
Okay, that, that'll do it. I'd like to make a motion to extend the contract of superintendent of schools for one additional year.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
That makes it until the chair. It's three years out, I'm just, that's what the other.
Roll call.
Chairman Patenoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Secretary O'Wort?
Yes.
Ed Cordino?
Yes.
Philip Delmeyer?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnear? Yes.
I would like to make a motion to extend the contract of director of personnel and business one additional year.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Chairman Patenoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Secretary O'Wort?
Yes.
Ed Cordino?
Yes.
Philip Delmeyer?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnear?
Yes.
One more, I'd like to make a motion to extend the contract one year for the director of technology.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Chairman Patenoster?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Secretary O'Wort?
Yes.
Ed Cordino?
Yes.
Philip Delmeyer?
Yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnear?
Yes, we're done.
We're supposed to start. All right.
You didn't.
No, no, you didn't. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry.
Sorry, I'm confused.
Sorry. Okay, I'd like to make a motion. I can't hear all of their prickets. The tree frogs or whatever they are. I'd like to make a motion to increase the superintendent of schools contract by three percent for the following for the next year.
I'll second.
Any discussion? I had something. I think Scott, Don and Bruce all did a very good job. I'll leave it like that. Roll call.
Chairman Patenoster?
No.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Secretary O'Wort?
No.
Ed Cordino?
Yes.
Philip Delmeyer?
Yes.
David McMahon?
No.
Deborah Purnear?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to increase the director of business and personnel's contract for three percent for next year.
I'll, I'll second.
Any discussion?
I'd, I'd like to say one thing. I want to thank Don and Scott because they did take a zero in the past year in a very tough economic climate, but there needs to be a time when we need to step up as well and I want to thank you guys for that.
Roll call.
Chairman Patenoster?
No.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Secretary O'Wort?
No.
Ed Cordino?
Yes.
Philip Delmeyer?
Yes.
David McMahon?
No.
Deborah Purnear?
Yes.
Sorry, I was in the days. The next regular board of education meeting is scheduled for Thursday, July seventeenth, two thousand fourteen. All in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
I'd like to call the special board of education meeting to order at five oh four. Roll call.
Chairman Patenoster? Vice Chair Nafrio?
Here.
Secretary O'Wort? Ed Cordino?
Here.
Philip Delmeyer? David McMahon?
Here.
Deborah Purnear?
Here.
Slute of the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are you making your presentation?
Great.
That's great.
Great is good.
I think Scott went to look for Phil, who's definitely in the building.
Yeah.
Lou has a conference call for work, so he didn't want to. Okay, so in order to achieve the, the level of funding that we have, the administrators met more than once and these are the positions that we're actually acting on the other night and were eliminated from the budget. These positions are being shifted to grant funding. One of them is there's a certified teacher that's going to come out of Title II. And the four instructional pairs, we had not included Title I in the budget. If we do not get that funding from Title I, we're then going to have to go into the building discretionary accounts to make up that funding. But that was, the consensus from the administrators was that that was something that was reasonable as opposed to making additional staff cuts. These are positions that were requested in the budget, but that do not currently exist. So these are new positions. And those are new additional dollars that were requested for behavioral consulting services and for common core testing materials. So this one hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars would all have been in addition to our new programs or new personnel versus what's in the budget currently. We did have some teacher turnover and this does make a couple of assumptions, but I think they're reasonable assumptions in terms of replacing staff members. We have, and there are a couple of positions that there is no money in this for. There's a second NBIS math position, but that was a fairly new teacher, so we're assuming that there's not necessarily any savings there. And there's also an NBIS guidance counselor and again, we're assuming there's not necessarily any savings there. And there's also the high school school psychologist. But again, that's a, that's an area where we may not actually save any money. At the bottom, you'll see there's a lane change in high school overloads that are actually added back in. That's correct. So that subtotal is sixty-three thousand dollars. This is something we talked about repeatedly, the medical insurance premium. This is, these are the final numbers and I've been talking about this since I think we got them back in April. Diesel fuel. Now, this is the significant change from the other night. The, apparently the way the excess cost grant is going to be handled in fourteen, fifteen is different from the way it was handled this year. The two hundred and seventy thousand dollars was actually put into the board's allocation. So the town is going to keep the special ed funds as opposed to them flowing through to us, but they've given us the two hundred and seventy thousand dollar credit directly into our appropriation expense. That's not what was done this year, that's not what was done last year, but I confirmed the final number with town hall and that apparently is how they arrived at that number. Don, is there indication if we're going to keep flopping back and forth or are we going to, is there any, any stability moving forward so we don't have to guessing here? Who did you talk to? Anthony? Well, I talked to Anthony yesterday. He's not going to make that decision. And I just, as I said, I just confirmed the number.
But I was going to begin that the grant was specifically for, and this is fine, this makes me a little bit more comfortable even in the other name for whatever reason, it just, but in excess, the grant is for the funding of special ed students, so why, I'm just curious as to why it's not coming directly? Why is that the funding you're ending?
For a number of years, it didn't come to the board nor was it reflected in the board's budget. It was brought to the attention.
It's a situation.
It was brought to the attention three, two years ago, three years ago by our road. It was three years ago and so it was, the first time the special ed excess cost grant was appropriated to the board was in twelve thirteen. And what happens, it always goes to town hall. Now what happens is, what was happening is they were giving us a credit for the excess cost grant that they received. The same is true this year. That's the way it was handled this year. Next year, what they've done is they've taken the number that I estimated it to be and, you know, and that's a, that's a widely variable number because of changes and placements that occur throughout the year. We've had three or four movements in the last two weeks with students coming, going. It's, you, you know.
Totally, totally.
Week to week, it's.
So what happens if the excess cost grant, if there is more than four hundred and thirty thousand dollars and we've already been allocated the money from the town, where's the rest of it?
Well, one or two things were happened. I guess, you know, we, because when the discussion occurred at the budget workshop with the, from, by the town council, there was talk that if we had additional placements beyond the two hundred and seventy thousand, we could come in and discuss that with them.
I'm still stuck on my question of that. That should be board of ed money. If there's an excess after the two seventy, why is the town holding it, whether we have replacements or not?
Well, on the other side of the coin though, you could have the opposite situation where the grants are less than two seventy and so are we then going to get it back? And I mean, and that's a discussion that frankly wasn't, and we never really had.
When the town receives that money, do they, do they encumber it into a spe, a special town where they can't, you know, it can't be transferred anywhere else?
Well, in this case, no, because what they've done, as I said, is they've actually already added it into our appropriation. So at this point in time, you know, it, it basically, it's done.
The two seventy, but if there's a remainder, where does that sit? If there's more than two seventy, that's a check.
Well, as I said, if there's more than two seventy, we can either go back and ask for it if, you know, we've had placements to generate it. Oh, I'll know. I mean, I can figure it out based on the information that Maria Duhmark does. And that's, I mean, we're doing the same thing now. I mean, I, you know, I, when I get that, when I get that excess cost grant check, I actually compare it to the numbers that we gave the state to figure out literally which students it's applied to. So, you know, that's.
So you'll know if there's more than two seventy. Okay. Okay.
Then there was some, we had to talk briefly about PCA being somewhat higher and the other thirty-four hundred dollars in there is just, was just my way of balancing. I added that into unanticipated. We have, we had one unanticipated placement and I increased it a little to make the numbers balance. And then heating oil. And then, so that subtotal is one sixty-five, two twenty-one. And so this is, and this is actually the motion you now have for me. This total is what Don beat? I've got that. I just have to click once more.
Thank you guys very much for this breakdown and all your hard work and all the administrators as well for all their hard work and their cooperation and spirit.
And I apologize for not having this in the last meeting, so.
You could ask a question.
Well, I'm also, I'm also going to make a suggestion to, in, to that end. I think, you know, typically having the budget subcommittee meeting before the board meeting works. I think, you know, typically having the budget subcommittee meeting before the board meeting works from July through May, but I think maybe in June it really doesn't.
Needs to be a separate meeting.
And I think we probably should have it as a separate meeting and move it ahead at least a couple days before the board meeting or even a week before the board meeting. That way, if there are questions, you know, we can get you answers. If there are concerns about something, you wanna, you know, you wanna look at a different option, we would even have time to pull the administrators back together and, you know, talk about whatever you guys were interested in knowing more about. So I think in this case, it's something that, you know, we need to, we need to rethink our model.
I think we should put that on the agenda for next month. It'll give us plenty of time to discuss it and change the budget subcommittee calendar for next year as well.
And it would just be similar to this evening.
Yeah, I agree.
Standing on meeting special meeting.
I agree.
I think that's a great idea.
Thank you guys very much.
Just to be, just to be clear in my own mind, our, our budget, our budget that we forwarded has been reduced by $844,263.
Correct.
And that's, and then there's the credit for the 270. No, that's, I mean, that, the, that includes that because they put the 270 into our appropriation line. So our...
They took the, they took the $1,014,000.
Basically, yes.
Well, no, they really took the 844 because they did give us credit for the excess costs. So the number, the number that we're working off of now is $30 million, 087, 737.
My motion was for 32 million change.
Correct.
So that's all I have.
Any other questions? Do we have something in writing in the form of minutes is fine about that, um, extra money? If there's extra money into the excess cost grant?
Yeah, it is in the...
As long as we do, that's fine.
Yeah, we'll talk about that later.
Thank you all for coming back tonight to move this forward. I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to reduce the 2014, 2015 budget request by the following amounts. $457,955 from certified salaries. $105,722 from non-certified salaries. $167,965 from employee benefits. $35,000 from professional services. $36,000 from transportation. $50,000 from supplies. And to increase the 2014, '15 budget request for outside tuition by $8,379.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Again, thank you all for coming back to this meeting and thank you guys, the administrators. Roll call.
Vice Chair Nafrio?
Yes.
Ed Cordino?
Yes.
Philip Dalmyer?
For administrative purposes, yes.
David McMahon?
Yes.
Deborah Purnia?
Yes.
Who's our business?
I'll make a motion to adjourn. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.